Okay, whenever you are.
Okay, I'll call the work session of the Oregon City Commissioner's Order for Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rachel LaLle Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Present.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Here. So, it's future agenda items, and I have a future agenda item. I would like us to consider an ordinance to require pre-application meetings in both planning and building to be audio recorded and a recording of that be forwarded to the applicant within 24 hours.
Is that a motion?
No, it's just that's a request for item.
I would actually second that thought because applicants go down a path based on that, and it's important that the that information is accurate and retrievable, so I would I would go along.
And I've had numerous things over the last five years where people have come in and said, "Well, the city told me one thing," and then the city staff says, "Well, that's not what we said." And so if there's a if there's a recording, then there isn't any question about what was said by who.
Agreed.
I would like to know what the staff's opinion is about that because they take notes.
Yeah, but notes aren't notes are subjective to the individual person. An audio recording is an actual recording of the event.
So maybe we brought up a concern, and you could put it on the list, and staff can return to us with possible solutions and talk about it, about what the issue is and for it.
Like I said-
That's what you're asking for, just to be on the list.
It's just a future item. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, please.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to it was brought to my attention by a couple of members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee that they made some recommendations to the commission last September. And those recommendations have not been brought forward to the commission, and I would like to see those brought forward because they're wondering what happened to that. It sort of went into the black hole when we had a gap in staffing, and it needs to be brought back and put on the agendas. So their recommendation had to do with something you're concerned about, Dan, which was moving forward on the Charter Parks. There was a specific item regarding Waterboard Park and a specific item regarding Tyrone Woods Park.
Again, I would support bringing those up for discussion if that's the case, and we've overlooked it due to a change in personnel or changed position or changing commission members of any commission, let's not lose it in the shuffle. So let's let's get it back up here and discuss it.
Okay, I'm good with that. Anything else?
Nope.
They'll move on to 3A 20-077 Downtown Oregon City Quiet Zone Update Funding Strategy. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. So the lion's share of this presentation was put together, and really, the lion's share of the work on the quiet zone was done by Dana Webb, so I'm gonna have she's gonna do the presentation for you tonight, and I'll be here to help if I need to.
Oh, dang it. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the downtown quiet zone and funding strategy. So as a reminder, you last got an update on the quiet zone at your February 2019 City Commission Goals Retreat. This the work related to the quiet zone ties into Goal One for cultivating an environment for successful economic development. Tonight will serve as a check-in on kind of a incremental step in the work we've been doing and also an opportunity to get your feedback on where do we go from here. So just as a reminder, the Federal Rail Administration oversees the Train Horn Rule that was adopted in 2005. It requires all locomotive engineers sound a train in advance of a public grade crossing. The Train Horn Rule also provides an opportunity for agencies to establish a quiet zone. An agency desiring to establish a quiet zone needs to address to mitigate the increased risk from the absence of the horn. So essentially, by taking away the horn, you need to provide as safe of an environment. So in order to kind of dig into this, you know, technical specialty type of work, we've contracted with Wiser Rail Engineering, who's a local railroad engineer. He assisted us in holding a diagnostic team review. So we met with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail Division, Federal Rail Administration, Union Pacific Railroad, the owner of the tracks through downtown, Oregon City Staff, and also invited private property owners. And at that meeting, we visited each of the sites, kind of walked through what's out there today, concerns that each of the different representatives identified at the crossing, and came to a general consensus on the improvements necessary to mitigate the increased risk.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are we talking about all the crossings or the specific one at 10th and Main?
Two of them.
10th and 11th.
10th and Main and 11th. So yes, we looked at the two the two crossings.
Okay, so on terms of the private property, is it property owner single or property owners plural? Plural? And who were they?
All. All were invited.
All who?
All who?
The property owners, right?
What property owners? You're talking about adjacent residential property owners?
Adjacent property owners, and I think we focused our attention on the 10th Street Crossing. So the Dutch Brothers business owner and the, I would say, the interested party for our vacant lot at 10th and Main.
Okay, what about-
So those were those were the property owners that were invited.
Okay, what about the property owners that are up the hill that are adjacent?
Uh, no.
Why not?
Can we restrict this to the presentation at this point?
Well, I'm just trying to get a clear understanding.
I don't want to relitigate what the staff has already done at this point.
I'm not trying to litigate, I'm just trying to understand what the powers were of who we talked to and why those specific people were chosen and why other people weren't chosen. Because I don't I don't have any involvement in this other than a meeting I went to last year.
So my recollect is the the rules provide the city with the opportunity to invite others, right? So the idea is we've got to have a manageable field meeting. These are field meetings, by the way, and so we invited those that we thought were most impacted by the possible improvements at that crossing. So folks up on the top of the hill, for instance, were not necessarily going to be affected by the sidewalk improvements or median improvements, those kind of things. So we focused our attention on those folks that are likely to have driveways or have current driveways off that railroad section at 10th and Main.
Okay.
The 11th the 11th Street Crossing, we don't really have that kind of scenario. There's some parking there and but not necessarily property owners, so.
Thank you, that clarified it. This was this was just a little too general.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you.
So at the conclusion of that diagnostic team meeting, we have the general consensus from the group on those improvements, and that resulted in the technical memorandum included in your packet. So I'll just kind of quickly give a little overview of each of the crossings. So this is the the 10th or Singer Hill Crossing. You can see we've got the tough curb median that's been placed out there for a couple of years. This is a median that that you can drive over.
Sorry.
Oops. So we looked at at that piece, kind of coming down the hill, we've got the advanced warning signage so that we don't get cars that stop on the tracks. So we kind of looked at those different pieces. Additionally, you can kind of see here, this is where the pedestrian crossing is. It's very close to the existing crossing arm gate and and is was identified as a safety So in here is a very difficult to see, but in the packet is a full-size drawing of the proposed improvements at at 10th and Singer Hill. So what the team came to a conclusion would need to be done is the crossing panel, so the panel where the railroad tracks are would need to be replaced with a current standard panel. It would need to be widened to add that panel in the location for the pedestrian crossing. The location of the pedestrian crossing would move from kind of that location that you could see in the photo right next to the road to over here and then have sort of a switchback to provide an ADA accessible route back to the existing sidewalk. We would install two new railroad crossing arms for the intersection. So currently, it has two gates that come down to block you from entering the crossing. It would be a four quadrant gate system that would also come down and block you from going around the gate into the crossing. The location where the sidewalk would be moved here would require a new set of lights for pedestrians. And then it would also require closure of the Dutch Brothers driveway in this location and the replacement of that tough curb that's out there that's considered a mountable curb to a non-traversable or non-mountable curb that's 100 feet long and approximately seven inches tall. Those improvements for design and construction are approximately $1.4 million. So just quickly, I've got an example. So a four quadrant gate has the two sets. First, the entrance gates come down to block you from entering the crossing, and at a slight delay, the second set of gates comes down so it doesn't trap a car in there. On the left is the a tough curb median, and on the right is a more traditional curb. This example is at Beaver Creek. The new curb on 10th Street would need to be a minimum of seven inches tall, so a little bit taller than what you would see for a standard curb.
So the theory is with quad gates, we don't need to have people be able to drive over this thing, that they're going to be stopped, and so that the other median is sufficient. Okay, thank you.
Looking at 11th, this is only a pedestrian crossing. Many years ago, the vehicle crossing was closed, and so you can see kind of what they refer to as a swing gate with a stop sign on the end. Coming from Washington towards the railroad tracks is the picture on the left where you kind of go through what we refer to as a Z gate, so you kind of go one direction and you you look down the tracks, and then it turns you a 180 and you look down the other direction of the tracks. But it doesn't it doesn't quite-
Phone in her hand.
Doesn't quite meet current standards and would need to be replaced in a more appropriate way. And then the middle picture is coming from Main Street up the hill, and so you have very limited visibility of the tracks. So at this at this intersection, we have identified a list of improvements related to the pedestrian crossing. So we would need to replace the crossing panel and widen out the existing panel. It's very narrow today. This these improvements would include fencing. So where we kind of saw that small gate on there's one on either side, that would become 42-inch-tall fencing along the entire distance, so so people couldn't just step over or under that existing gate. New signal equipment, installation of pedestrian lights, and then that that new reconstructed Z gate. So these improvements are approximately $600,000 for design and construction.
It's affordable.
Yes, so the the pedestrian lights also have the bells with them.
There's some quick question.
Yes.
Those structures that are right there next to the railroad, are those houses or businesses?
Houses.
Yes.
I believe it's-
They're houses, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And did they were invited to the meeting?
I don't believe they were invited to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Our invites were focused mostly on 10th Street, but not this one. That's my recollect, anyway.
Yes. So we've tried to pull together a list of possible funding options. And so on this on this slide, we've got a large array of colors. The green highlighted ones have been identified as possible fun or funding options, so the funding, yes. Yellow are possible funding options that do not require third-party agreement. So you as the commission could identify funds from those yellow colors. The brown ones are possible funding options that do have a third-party requirement, so a local improvement district or a business or economic district or bonding would require an outside party to agree. And then those items in red would not qualify for funding options for this type of a project. So we looked a little bit into how other agencies have funded a quiet zone. The city of Milwaukee was able to leverage the Portland to Milwaukee Light Rail Project and TriMet funded their quiet zone improvements. Tuolotin used their American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 funding that they were allocated. Portland looks like they've used kind of some public-private partnerships and possibly some urban renewal, but I was-
They did.
I was struggling to find exact numbers.
Yeah, we did. When I was there, we did some in Northwest with the River District.
Salem has identified funding through their Keep Salem Moving Streets and Bridges Bond measure, and Eugene has funded quiet zone improvements with urban renewal and general obligation bonds. So kind of tonight, what we were hoping is kind of based on sharing this update of the costs for these projects, that that you kind of have a conversation and share your feedback on a few items. You know, kind of the first question we would ask is confirming that a quiet zone is still a city commission goal. You know, should we move forward with a detailed design without construction funding identified? Would you consider closing the 11th Street pedestrian crossing? We did place cameras out, and we average 145 to 200 pedestrians per day using that crossing.
Well, I asked you a question.
I know, that was one of my questions, too.
Yeah.
You're talking about just the one intersects section of 10th and Singer and?
No.
No, 11th.
11th. The one that doesn't have traffic.
Right.
Just just pedestrians.
145 a day.
Yep.
If you have other ideas on funding options and then sort of an idea of, you know, a longer-term goal where we maybe set aside a smaller amount of annual funding for five to 10 years to be able to save up, so.
So one of the things we talked about on this slide here was just trying to frame this up in that, you know, when we've looked at funding options that we have through justification of gas taxes or pavement maintenance fees, obviously 10th and portions of Singer Hill could use pavement improvements. If you noticed in the pictures, they look poor. So there's definitely justification for use of gas tax or pavement maintenance utility fees, not necessarily system development charges because we're really not adding any capacity to this location. But and then the other element of that is we've got a development proposal planned there, right? So do we coordinate that with development? There's some frontage improvements that could tie into this as well. But even looking at that and looking at, you know, for looking at it from a pretty high level, right? Not not drilling deep into those details. And we see, you know, we've got about $2 million worth of project, and we see the the funding strategy that we could come up with in a relatively short period of time, our goal window, which is two years, of maybe a half a million dollars that we could come up. So we've got a $1.5 million gap. And so so for me, it's like, well, do we do any engineering? Do we do some of the engineering when we don't really have a plan forward on funding strategy? I mean, we can identify these funds, but we don't see a you don't see in the near-term horizon a way to fill that gap. So that's knowing a little bit about that. We think the the design work, the concept work that we've done is good work. We haven't proceeded with detailed designs on this. We haven't done the survey work. We've mostly used our mapping tool to get to those maps that you saw on there, but we've got a what we think is a very good estimate. We've also heard from the railroad that, you know, these this diagnostic meeting, typically they like to see something happen within a couple of years of that diagnostic meeting. Otherwise, staff changes and, you know, we've documented that information, but they're still used to seeing some kind of improvement plan moved to in front of them for approval in a couple of years. So there's a there's a lot of inputs to this, but the problem is just the funding gap, really.
This is the last slide?
Yeah, that's it.
Questions and comments?
Thank you, Chair.
No, no, from me. My 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 request isn't working. You referred to a development proposal. What development proposal is that?
Well, it's the development proposal proposal at 10th and Main for the multi, I think it's multi-use on the lower floor with some parking under under-
Right.
Building parking and then housing. If I remember correctly, I don't remember the number of units, but it's that-
It's like the 33, as I recall.
I think the Urban Renewal Commission has mostly considered that.
And their concern was they wanted entrance to their facility adjoining the tracks is what it was. That's what the report says.
Right. Well, I think the other concern is that the request for the quiet zone started with that because of the residential component.
Correct.
They would have liked to have seen a quiet zone tied to that residential use. If there's no quiet zone, potentially, the residential use might not be as viable.
And and I understand that, and I think there's other options for it, too, besides that. So my questions then are, what safety issues have we had? Have we experienced any deaths or injuries at these crossings to anyone's knowledge?
Yes.
Uh, it's been a while. You remember?
The guy driving his car down the tracks.
Yes. I mean, the answer is yes.
Other than suicidal-type people.
Um, I still think the answer is yes. It's got more history to it than than I think that was the most recent was kind of the more suicidal type. But I don't recall all the safety issues.
I think there was a vehicle into the power pole.
Yep.
And then the vehicle was on the tracks.
Yeah, there was a gentleman who was running from the police and drove down the railroad tracks and got stuck.
Well, you can't fix stupid.
Well, I understand that, but someone was dumb enough to do it.
So I guess the point is, is all of those things happened with the current safety features in place, right?
Right.
So while even a quad gate, if somebody wants to drive through the quad gate, it's not going to stop them. I mean, those are designed to break away on purpose, so.
So we seem to be focusing on the safety issues, but the title of the thing is quiet zone. And the emphasis was on quiet zone, and it had to do a lot with that development at 10th and Main. And here's my thoughts on it, and they're pretty straightforward. You're looking at a $2 million expenditure, largely unfunded. If you look at those 10 sources of funds, six of the 10 are definite no's. One of them is going to require a decision by Urban Renewal, and three of them require a vote. I look at the complexity of the number of parties involved, and good luck bringing them to agreement. And I think about what is our return on investment and what do we accomplish if our goal is quiet? And what's the return on that investment? So I remove the horn from the crossing, the train horn. I don't remove the train noise. I've still got that. I think there's a limited benefit. I I'm not I'm ready to to walk away from this or at least restructure it in a more dedicated to safety and downsize it to something that would accomplish that. And that's my thought on it.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, this has been on our radar for a decade, and ditching it now doesn't make any sense. It's more than just about that lot at 10th Street. It's about upper levels of all the buildings in downtown Oregon City that have been looked at as potential uses for residential. It's about the empty courthouse that could be eventually a hotel. It's about a lot more than just one lot. It's about people being able to sleep in downtown and work in downtown, and we've been working on this a long, long time. And so now that we're making some progress moving something forward, I can't imagine anyone would would back out from that. Downtown's worked on this. A lot of people have been working on this for a long, long time. This was a high priority for the last at least, what, two commissions, if not more?
Yeah.
So I can't imagine letting it go at this point.
Well, I guess I'll step in here. I I agree with Commissioner Smith that I think it's an important thing to do. I think I certainly would not be opposed to using Urban Renewal money to 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 create this thing. I think it's important that we talk about, you know, we do think about the courthouse, although that may now be in some jeopardy. But also, if we're talking about a possibility of another hotel on Main Street, and it's clear that there's going to be redevelopment opportunity at Miles Fiber Gossam Plastics, there's a lot of there's a lot of lot of things that are in this mix. I'm not sure exactly where they're required to start blowing the horn. I'm sure they have a sign somewhere that tells them, right? So it's got to be somewhere between the tunnel and halfway down. So it the horn covers a lot more than just, you know, that one block right there. I I will say that I lived in a house that was about seven or eight blocks uphill from 12th and Main, and while I could hear the horn after the first month or two, it just faded from my perception. It's just something, in fact, there were at the time when a train derailed up in Washington and trains stopped coming by, and that's when I noticed that there weren't any trains. But I think we need to to continue to move forward on this, and I would support using Urban Renewal money to do it. Commissioner McGriff?
Uh, well, I don't disagree with anything that anybody said, and as the person that actually lives the closest to where the train goes by, I agree with you. I notice when it isn't going by because I now know, after many years in my house, oh, that's this, that's the freight, that's the Amtrak. I mean, I know, I don't hear it. And about 10 years ago, we had someone move into our area, and they complained about the train. And I said, "Okay, neighbor, you knew the train was there when you bought the house. The train ain't going anywhere just because you moved here." And I wasn't being that blunt about it, but we had a neighborhood potluck, and it came up. I think safety should be the priority. I don't want us to move forward a project just because it satisfies somebody's redevelopment idea. There's more to this than just that lot. My concern is, is that there's no money, and I don't want to see us move forward on spending because where's this where's the allocation of staff time if we do get into design? Where's that money coming from? I mean, I we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. It's something that we need to have done, but we don't have any money, and maybe we need to look at some of those possible options to fund it because it is a it is bigger than just downtown. It would be a community benefit. I'm not saying we ask the public for that, but I think we need to keep all the options on the table about how to how to have the funding for this. And it's not going to happen in the next two years, unfortunately, but, you know, unless you got a 3D printer downstairs and your bonds, I don't know. If we had real urban renewal, this would be a perfect project, not that we would spend all the all of our money on urban renewal to do this project because, as my experience is, we we partnered not only with the city of Portland, Urban Renewal Commission, and there were other funding sources. So it was it was not just one pot of money that the money was coming from.
Commissioner LaLle Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. So I I thought your comments, both Mayor and Commissioner McGriff, were interesting. On on one hand, you're saying, "Over time, you never even hear it," so I'm not even sure why we need to do it. That I mean, that proposed the that supports the "we don't need a quiet zone if you're just gonna never hear it anymore after a month."
I think that's the red's a definitely component. But if you talk about transient lodging.
Lodging is different.
Yeah, now that's different because then you have new people who have just shown up, and they haven't grown accustomed to to the noise.
I do will say, I do stay at the McMinimans in Centralia, and the train goes right by there.
Yeah. Did it wake you up at 4:00 AM?
I heard it.
So I like the idea of potentially using urban renewal. However, my concern is that if it's not partnered with the project, there's no tax increment where we're actually using urban renewal in order to get the reinvestment back into the city of how tax increment financing is supposed to work, right? So if we're just funding it ourselves, then I don't see how that's increasing or we don't have a return on our investment of tax revenues, correct? Does that sound correct, Wyatt?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. And Commissioner LaLle Smith is absolutely correct with the caveat that I imagine that if if there were other impacts to economic development based on the fact that 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 was made, there could be an impact. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so where I'm going with that is I I agree with Commissioner McGriff that it would definitely have to be partnered with other development that was stepping up and coming to the table in order to pair with urban renewal, in order to see the benefit of- of that development, um, and that increased revenue or that tax increment revenue to come back to us. So, um, do you have a, is there a cost estimate anywhere, if you provided it, sorry, I missed it, of like the next steps of what you're asking for? Like, is it, is it already slated in the budget to move forward? And this is just a check in to make sure we're still supporting it? Or is it that there's a budget request tied to this in order to move forward with the design and, and all piece?
So, uh, the work that we've done with Wiser is about, uh, Wiser Rails is about complete. My recollect is we do have additional funding in the budget for the quiet zone. Your recollection as well? And, um, you know, one piece that I was trying to, uh, we, we haven't asked for a detailed scope and fee for the full engineering, you know, get together bid document. But I'm a little bit, um, concerned about that not knowing because, um, designs do have a little bit of a shelf life associated with them. And so, I mean, the, my, my main concern, I guess it seems like right now, if you look at the goal, and maybe we can go back to the goal, it's complete the design and, um, yeah, complete the design and construction plant drawings for this, for these projects, and then come up with the funding strategy. I, I feel like, um, staff is in a, a tough spot without some direction. We, we could complete the design and construction drawings under this budget and under this two-year goal period. I just worry that sits on the shelf for too long and then becomes a problem. And then the funding strategy to me does, i- if we're talking urban renewal, obviously based on the work session that we just had, there's some questions about that, right? And so if it, without urban renewal, we are kind of scratching our heads about how else, you know, you might fund that project. And, um, the, the, the other ideas that are out there is, you know, maybe taking a longer term approach and setting aside money and why it's been good about, you know, taking smaller chunks at things like gas taxes. We're going to get some additional gas taxes from, uh, House, I think it was House Bill 2017. And, you know, the county also passed a vehicle registration fee. Now, both of those were passed for other reasons, but the, but legally, there's not restrictions on those. So this commission hasn't really made a decision on how to move forward with spending those funds. Some of them were programming into the, we programmed into the budget and are allocated for projects, but it, moving forward, there's, you know, there's some, something there. I just, yeah, I ju, part of me is like, especially, you know, we try to give you commission updates. I like to try to accomplish those when we can. So is there an adjusted, are you, would you be okay if we brought bracket different?
Can we answer the question?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. So I, what, the way I would prefer to proceed is that you work with Wyatt and Tony and identify two, maybe three possible funding sources that we can use and bring it back to us in a work session in, in April or May so that we can talk about those funding mechanisms and see whether that would be something that the commission would, you know, like to proceed on. It's, it's clear to me that there's at least three, if not four of us up here who consider the project to be important or somewhat important.
So as part of that discussion, is it a budget item currently, to your recollection?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Halliday and Commissioner O'Donnell. Currently in the budget is the funding for the design and construction drawings portion, which is part of the commission goal, which then Public Works has been working with. The next stage is to identify a funding strategy for construction, of which there is no funding in the budget. And to re, just to quickly revisit where we were at with the general fund, because we're always looking for where we can make improvements in the community under the commission direction. We, we balance the budget with specifically to meet the core service needs and also to provide a little bit more funding for parks deferred maintenance, and we were able to accomplish that goal. No tax increases, no rate increases. So that's kind of the baseline of what we're holding out with the general fund now, is meeting core services. So it'd be challenged under that paradigm to meet, provide funding for the gap out of the general fund. There are other options like, you know, we're levying below our permanent tax rate, but by no means am I making any of, anything like that because we've taken pride in keeping that general fund baseline budget. I would say to answer the mayor's question, there are probably two viable options, and one is if we were to discuss as an urban renewal agency whether to close down the district or maintain the district, and we're looking for possible projects, notwithstanding, understanding the impacts to economic development and whether there's increment benefit to it. Urban renewal agency, this is one project that could be on the table to discuss of whether or not you keep it open. General fund, we're strapped. I'm challenged to think about what the other funding sources, and I think this is why John is kind of wondering. I would say we could probably, within the next two years, it's urban renewal or some other challenge, come up with a revenue source within the next four years after this biennium. Then we can look at the general fund and recalculate again. That's my two cents, but of course looking for direction.
What's the shelf life of design and construction drawings?
Exactly.
I mean, I would, neither one of those intersections is going to change.
That's true. That's true. So there's, there's benefit to that. Part of the design would incorporate probably an entrance to the, the future development at 10th and Main. So that may or may not come to fruition. It's kind of hard to say. You asked for April. My ask would be, um, if we can, you know, have an understanding that we're, this needs to sit for a little bit until maybe we have this urban renewal conversation, and maybe we learn some things about some of our bigger projects and some of the, you know, project costs that are coming out of those pretty soon, probably in, uh, June, uh, May, bid for the Malala Avenue project. That may give us some wiggle room on, you know, the funding that we, we have access to, to make a determination, should we move forward with the design? But I'd like to push that out a little further than April and.
Okay. Did you, um, uh, include the county, uh, increase in the, the registration fee in our budget to suit this biennium?
Yes, Mayor Halliday, we did. And so that, and then, and so John talked a little bit about the programming for those funds and some of the other projects that you're aware of on the transportation side. So we did include the, that funding. And since the work session occurs to me as well, that I, even if we, if we're talking about urban renewal and we're talking about a project that could fit in that scope, the other side of that equation is shutting down the urban renewal, which would bring tax revenue back into the general fund, the direct city portion of the tax increment.
Shutting down the urban renewal is nonstarter for me. I don't know about you, but.
Sorry, Mayor. So I, I think my point being that whatever decision is made, those funds could be leveraged on both sides of that decision to help with this project, if that's helpful.
Commissioner Lael Smith?
So, um, has the programming been designed, uh, has already been decided for the VRF, the vehicle registration fee increase?
Yeah, that was the question I was tasked.
Yes.
Well, you put it in the budget, but have you, how has it been programmed?
So my recollection of that is we, um, in this budget, there's not a lot of that because of the timing of when it plays in.
Right.
So it's just plays in as revenue into the transportation fund and is, uh, you know, helps our bottom line contingency. But as this program matures and gets fully implemented, that, you know, we, I would say this about programming for those funds, we, uh, the way we talk to the county about it and the way we've talked internally about it is, um, the vehicle registration fees and the, and, uh, to some degree, the gas taxes were meant more for capacity enhancement projects, matching some of those, you know, those projects that are partially funded through system development charges, but don't have a match on the other side from either the street fund or something like that, so.
But there's no requirement that we spend that money even on transportation, as I'm aware.
Vehicle, no, I think both of those are, are dedicated to transportation. Yeah.
Okay. But that's pretty loosey goosey.
Well, it's, uh, if, if your question is, could those funds be spent on a railroad quiet zone, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm okay with, you know, stretching it out six months. I'm not sure I want to take it farther than that. If we've got money budgeted for, you know, construction drawings, I, you know, I wouldn't mind pushing it into the second half of the biennium. I think the shelf life on that is more than Mr. Lewis is, is stating because of the fact that these intersections aren't going to change. Probably the notification technology is not going to change dramatically. I mean, we might switch from LEDs to some other form of light. Beyond that, I mean, you know, it's gates, it arms and bells and signs. So how much can that change in two or three years?
I, I would agree. You're in areas that, uh, for one, you got a railroad crossing, so almost nothing can happen there unless the railroad decides to do something, uh, which has happened. So, yeah, the, I, I would agree with some of that, Mayor, that I may, I may have overstated the, the shelf life of those, but.
Commissioner Lael?
Typically, we don't.
It would be good to know the shelf life, and if there's a firm number that, that Union Pacific or whoever it is down there is set, that would be a good thing to know. I do, I mean, these are all good discussions to have when, you know, with, with Mr. Parno's summary of the budgetary restraints right now, that needs to be brought into the discussion. The timing of the completion of the project as far as, you know, the shelf life of things we do. Uh, I do want to caution everybody that there are competing demands for money, and there'll be competing demands for UR money. So the question is that when the time comes, where's the most bang for our buck? Are we going to forego something else? And that decision will have to be made then. And I do, I think about Commissioner Lael Smith's comment on the tax incremental financing and the additional value we get. There would have to be a demonstrated benefit of this project to make the UR commission comfortable with funding it. So that would be another discussion entirely.
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I think I know the answer to this question, John and Dana. I am assuming that UP is not contributing, would not contribute in any way to a project like this because they didn't in Portland, but that was like seven years ago. So is that, am I correct in my assumption?
Dana would probably say it nicer than I would, so.
You don't need to be nice.
I would say that's correct. And one of the concerns.
I've dealt with UP, so I know.
Kind of what the shelf life is. We have this general consensus on what the appropriate safety measures are that need to be implemented today. Changes in staffing at any of those agencies. Could change what those requirements are. If we see an increase in accidents, that may play into what people feel is an appropriate mitigation.
Been there, done that.
So I would suggest that, that Mr. Conkle and Mr. Lewis, you know, take this under advisement, um, bring it back at your discretion, but let's say, uh, no earlier than six months, but no later than a year. Is that acceptable, Commissioner?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. And I think we're going to focus on the funding, because I mean, really, we've got to, we've got to a spot where we're in agreement with the improvements are. I, I'd be, I'd be, I, I don't necessarily want to invest in detail in construction drawings if we have no funding. If we have funding, we can make the construction drawings go.
Sure. Okay. Then we're going to move on.
Really appreciate the feedback because we didn't know.
So we're going to 3B 20 dash 87, Urban Renewal Commission Appointment Process. Commissioner Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We held a open, um, we reopened the Urban Renewal Commission position for a two-year vacancy. It was a position that was a four-year and the person had resigned after two years. So they, there's two years remaining on this vacancy. And we received several applica, applications after reviewing the criteria, which is making sure they're an elector of the city of Oregon City. We are down to eight applicants, and we're just seeking direction tonight on how the commission would like to proceed to move forward with that. I provided a couple of options, and, um, we're open for discussion.
Just a general question. We do typically, typically get interested applicants who really don't live in the city or don't know that they don't live in the city. I mean, I've seen this kind of over and over again.
Oh, yes, all the time.
We get a lot of them.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
It seems to me that we should just proceed the way we've always proceeded and schedule a, a, a meeting to hold the interviews and vote. I don't, I don't know what other process you might think we need to have.
Okay, so.
Do we want to re-interview those who have previously interviewed and reapplied?
I think you interview everybody who applies.
Do we want to look at maybe beefing up the questions a little bit?
We need to redo the questions and mix them around or, or do something because I, if we, we'll have at least two candidates that have gone through exactly the same questions. So we need to do something to, um.
Why don't you, um, refresh. Present a, a list of possible questions to the commission in email. They can respond individually with suggestions and additions, and then we can, um, hammer that out in a meeting prior to holding the, um, holding the interviews. Is that okay?
Yep.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Beef them up a little bit.
So with that, Mr. Manager, you have any force?
Yes, and I, and I realize that the commission would like to see managers' reports. Sometimes things come up after this agenda's gone out that have popped up. We just wanted to pass along that Northwest National will be working on a natural gas project to ensure consistent service to its customers. Construction is scheduled between February and May 2020 on a one and a half mile stretch of South Myers Road between Highway 213 and the intersection of Claremont Way and Leland Road. Utility work will start as early as February 14th, so this Friday. Uh, so we are putting that out on our website and social media site a, as well to notify folks of the work that's going to be happening out there.
And they're handling all the flagging and they aren't going to be stopping traffic at any critical times?
We do anticipate some delays will occur as lane closures will take place between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Saturday. Uh, there will be flaggers to move traffic. Uh, there'll be no interruption of gas services anticipated.
Can we limit traffic closures to nine to three?
Not if we, well, well, part of the push on this one is to get this project done before we are full bore with Malala Avenue. So because of that, the time schedule is very tight and trying to limit them. We talked to them a fair amount about the limitations and it was a none, it wasn't going to work.
Well, then Ms. Brown and, and staff need to get together and start pushing on information as fast and as hard and as often as possible.
It's intent. We wanted you to know first.
John, is there any way we can get Northwest National to put up some informational signs or just say what's going on, just at maybe either end of the project so it's pretty apparent?
Sure.
I mean, people do sometimes read those things.
I wouldn't be surprised if we've asked that, but I'm not for sure, so we'll definitely ask that.
Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That is all for tonight, sir.
Does anybody have anything to report from their different committee assignments? I have nothing.
I don't.
I do.
I don't.
Go ahead, Commissioner McGriff.
Before I do my two committee reports, I wanted to just make a note for the record that, um, this Friday will be the 161st birthday of the founding of our state. And, uh, just for general information, uh, we didn't find out about this until February 14th, not we collectively, but we, the community, that the Congress did pass legislation on December 28th, 1858, approving Oregon to be the 33rd state, but we didn't find out until February 14th, so hence the delay. And people always ask me, well, why is it on Valentine's Day? I said Valentine's Day didn't exist back then, so it didn't happen. The other thing I wanted to note for the community is that February is Black History Month, and I wanted to encourage our community to celebrate the contributions that African-Americans have given to our country and just make a note of that. And my two committee reports are today, I participated in a three-hour-plus, uh, work session with the Downtown Association to reset the goals for 2020 and also to look at the, uh, application of our review by Main Street. We are performing Main Street, which is the highest level that you can receive in the Main Street program, and we will be having a program evaluation coming up in April. And I'm looking forward to that. I've also been, uh, gotten on a couple of committees. Two of the committees are reactivating, and so if it helps at all, I have, uh, volunteered to chair the committee that's called Design, but it will be focusing on the elevator and the kiosk. The other committee that I serve on is the Willamette Falls Heritage and Landings Commission, and their newest news as of yesterday is that the city of West Lynn has approved, uh, funding for the community building that they want to use there, the foot of the bridge, which is the old West Lynn City Hall. And so that will end up being offices for the organization as well as other community groups, and it'll be a community gathering space. And I also wanted to just say how pleased I was with the meeting that we had with the, several of the members of the Grand Ron Tribe, and I was very impressed by Chair Kennedy's comments. They were truly heartfelt, and she said that from the heart.
Any else? Or adjourn?